To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I ask for a moment of silence. Today is the 80th anniversary of the attack on Paul Harbor. And also a moment of silence for former mayor Richard Hutchins, who served from 1981 to 1985. May he rest in peace.
Alderman Ram Cassoon?
Here.
Alderman Tobin?
Here.
Alderman Kleiner?
Here.
Alderman Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois?
Here.
Alderman Burr?
Alderman Green?
Here.
Alderman Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
Formerest present.
Approval of minutes?
We have common council meeting minutes from November 1st, 2021.
Motion by Alderman Massey? So moved. Second by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
We have a report from Ag and Marcus for the Port Jervis Humane Society.
Receive the file. That it?
That's it.
For the good of the city, I'd like to call the mayor up.
I'd like to begin by welcoming Rick McCormick as our new clerk. Your first job, first day of the job on the, on the big desk. Welcome. And coincidentally, Rick is a former member of the Middletown School Board, believe it or not, from many, many years ago. And tonight, we are welcoming the interim superintendent, Amy Creden, Bishop Past, the Bishop, Bishop Williams, the president of the school board, John Perino, a member of the school board, and some of the professionals they brought in. They've been kind enough upon my invitation to come here this evening to make a presentation regarding the capital projects that are being proposed for Twin Towers and some of the other schools, I think a roof at Maple, Truman Moon. But more importantly, just to give you a brief introduction regarding the relationship that we've been developing with the Middletown School Board and the communication. The communication's been excellent between myself and the acting superintendent and members of the board. Been serving on the Martin, the MBK community forum from Anthony Williams and that group. And so we're, we're having a lot of interaction with the school district. And I think that's all good for both the city and for the school district. John Perino has always said, because John's been here for 120 years, that what's good for the city is good for the school district, and what's good for the school district is good for the city. And that's true. And so tonight, they're going to make a presentation on a project cost of $83 million. And I know some of the feedback that you've received and I've received is all positive in the sense that people know that we need work done in our schools. You know, Middletown is the, due to the last census data that was filed, we were the fourth fastest growing city in New York State. We had a population growth of over 8% in the city alone. As you know, the city only makes up about half of the school district because we're an enlarged district. And the area around the town of Walk Hill, that's part of the school district, is also growing. Our schools are bursting. We know that when you have a lot of people in a small place, that it causes other problems. So, and I think that's contributing to some of the activity that we've seen lately in urban schools throughout the country is facility. Sometimes we don't have the adequate facilities to address the needs, the needs of the students. So this project is a good project. I've examined it for a few weeks now. I think whenever you can spend $83 million and have no impact on your tax levy, on your local taxpayers, I think it's a good thing. Now, some of the feedback, I've had calls and people would say, but it's coming from somewhere. Well, it's coming from somewhere for this purpose of doing schools. And if we don't take it, it's going to go somewhere else. And at some point, you're going to be faced with the burden of addressing the overpopulation in our schools and all the other issues. And also keep in mind as Middletown residents, that as we improve these schools, we are in essence improving the property values in our communities. Because the number one reason why people move into a community, and the number one reason why our community has grown by 8%, while many cities have had a declining population over the past 10 years, can be attributed to the school district and the programs that are offered and the success of the district going back many, many years. So I want to applaud the district for being willing to come out and discuss this publicly. And they're bringing their professional team to give us an outline. I understand it's going to be about anywhere close to 15 minutes. I think it's important that we listen and have, if any questions, I'm sure they'll entertain them. But what I'm asking the public that is viewing this to do is keep in mind that this is no impact on you as a taxpayer, and it has an $83 million investment into your community with no, nothing out of your pocket. And it will only take that property value of yours that has increased tremendously over the last couple of years and improve it even more. So before, without further ado, the acting superintendent, Amy Creden, will come up and introduce her team and make comments that she feels appropriate. Thank you. Amy?
Congratulations, Mr. McCormick, on your new position. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor DiStefano, President Rodriguez, and the City of Middletown Common Council. We value the partnership between this great city and the schools, and we're overwhelmingly excited to receive the invitation to present this evening. Tonight, we're going to provide you with a quick vision for the project design, something we have not explored yet in the school district, a unique partnership. As we approach the final stages of our push to bring our shared vision for Twin Towers to the community, we are confident that tonight, what we present to you was the missing piece. We've partnered with a consulting team, Landon and Ryan. They're here with us this evening, and you'll get to hear from them in just a few moments. They've assisted us in designing and preparing a community and diversity participation plan specifically for this $83 million project. The Twin Towers project was conceived as a community school project, and the district has been working over the past months to pursue how best to deliver the project to our valued community. This project will work to engage a workforce located in our community and the surrounding region, and will represent the diverse elements, resources, and workforce of our community. This partnership will make sure that the Twin Towers project will continue to stimulate our local economy and keep local dollars local. We want to thank our community partners, specifically the mayor, his staff, this common council, the Board of Education, Bishop James Rollins, and our friends at the town of Walk Hill, as well as our legislative partner, Aileen Gunther. It was through everybody's shared voices and varied perspectives that this project came together. Open, honest dialogue with each of our valued stakeholders encourage us to sort of push our boundaries a bit more than we had done previously. And we thought really creatively about project design and again, how to keep local dollars Right now, our focus is getting to December 14th. It's just a short bit away, and we're aware that once we hit December 14th, if the vote becomes in our favor, our work has only just begun, but we're super excited. So I'm going to turn the presentation over after I introduce our team. We have our architect here from KGND, Walt Hauser. I have the folks from Landon and Ryan, Wendell Gray, Lloyd Dickerson, and Stacy Beaumont. And our Board of Trustees is represented tonight by Pastor Williams, Vince Crescenzo, and Mr. Perino. I'll start the presentation.
My name is Walt Hauser, principal at KGND Architects. We've been working with the district on a number of recent capital projects. And quickly walk you through the proposal. It's really multifaceted. So the proposed project will be a modernization of a building that was built in the late 30s. It will have site improvements that will impact and improve this traffic that occurs around the building, not only related to bus traffic, but parent drop off, and will include additional space for the increased student population in the district. So the image you see here in the yellowish building is the existing facility. So, and there are two major improvements related to traffic. One is the bus drop off, which we see on the left with the yellow buses in it. That's in the area of the building sign. You may know the digital building sign. So that'll be a new bus drop off outside of the auditorium. And then in front of the main entrance on the right, we're introducing a parent drop off. So the idea is, we'll actually double the capacity of vehicles that can be parked in front of the building. So the idea is speed up that operation. Additionally, that separates the bus traffic from the staff traffic in the rear of the building. So we have three distinct areas, and it provides us the greatest potential to handle that traffic with scheduling. So one of the major components of this building is missing compared to other components in the district is outdoor play space that can be used when conditions aren't perfect. So this, we're proposing a small synthetic turf play area. It's not a full-size field. And also outdoor hard court surfaces, so two basketball courts. And the idea is this can be used for recess and physical education when weather isn't perfect. It gives them essentially a year-round outdoor facility. This is something that this school in particular doesn't have compared to some other schools in the district. And then the big piece of work is interior renovation of the existing facility for modernization, which will include all-new HVAC system. So totally new HVAC to include air conditioning. This is the only school in the district that does not have air conditioning. And then in white, in the rear of the building, a new three-story addition, which will house a new cafeteria space, a new library media center, and then classrooms on the upper two floors. So the bulk of the work is the renovation additions and alterations to Twin Towers. The project also includes a small roof replacement project at Truman, at the Maple Annex at Truman Moon Elementary. You can see it highlighted in pink. It's about a $1.4 million roof replacement that'll happen concurrently with the Twin
So just to touch a little bit on some of the points that the mayor so appropriately highlighted before, we have at this time generational funding available to the school district, which makes what would become a really unmanageable project for the City of Middletown and Town of Walk Hill in terms of burdened on the taxpayer, really manageable. So through some of the federal funding that we have received through the American Rescue Plan and the coronavirus stimulus funding, we are going to allocate 13.5 million of the American Rescue Plan and 5 million of the Corona stimulus funding, both of which are federally funded that flow through the state to support this project. Additionally, we're going to use 17.3 of our capital reserves. And then we have $2.5 million in a food service fund balance, primarily coming from the amazing job that our food service team did in delivering 4.5 million meals during the 18 months of the pandemic. And so what becomes left then is the unappropriated fund balance, which is 7.8 million. So these are all the different places where the funding will come together from. So what's left is the anticipated state aid, which is almost $37 million. So how do we do this without an increase to the tax levies? So the projected cost for the two projects is just over 81 million for the Twin Towers complete modernization and the community schools approach, and then just over 1 million for the Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon Roof Replacement, which brings the total project cost to 83,232. So what the district and grant share is for just over 46 million. And so over 15 years, we will borrow just about $37 million. But what happens is that we anticipate that on that money that we will borrow, we will pay out for that money, but what we will get back is $37 million in state aid. So how it comes back to us is in an annual payment of just over 2 million, 2.4 million. So I think what some folks were seeing in some of the information that was presented in some of the bond notification, the public notification, was that the district was borrowing just about $37 million. And so folks were saying, but where is that coming back? And so I think the easiest way for it to say is that we anticipate that we will receive all of that back in state aid. Each building, our capital project, has a certain percent that we receive back in state aid. And so we are confident that when we borrow that money, we bond that money, that we will get back the 2.4 million each year in annual payments over 15 years, which will bring us to the 37 million. So the vote is December 14th. And what I would like to do now is introduce the folks from Landon and Ryan, who will talk about why we have really dug in on this project and isolated keeping local dollars local through some innovative to Middletown problem solving and project planning.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Wendell Gray. I'm the owner and CEO and president of Landon and Ryan Enterprises. I've been doing minority business, women business, compliance, and EEO compliance for over 28 years. Just a little story. I, I got into this business, oh, maybe 28 years ago because Rochester and the county, they were concerned about diversity on a $27 million three-phase project. And so they began to talk and they said, you know, we really want somebody in the community to come in and we want to give them a job. And basically, they wanted to train them for three years on all aspects of construction management. And, and they said with the hope that person one day would come back into their own community and start a business. That one in the million person was me, 28 years ago. And so we kind of spread out across the state. So I definitely believe in that program. I want to introduce Lloyd Dickerson.
Good evening, everyone. Lloyd Dickerson, Landon and Ryan. Been with the company about 18 years. I handle a lot of the K through 12 and a lot of the SUNY projects that we have. Nice to be with you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Beaumont. I've been with Landon and Ryan for just over eight years. I am a senior compliance consultant and also the resident expert on our compliance software management system.
Thank you, sir. Also, a little bit of background about our company. It's called Landon and Ryan Enterprises. Actually, it started off with my son. We called it Nandin. It was Landon of New York. My wife and I had a daughter, so her name was Ryan. And so we had to reconstruct the business, reorganize it. We didn't want to give her a complex. So that's why it's called Landon and Ryan Enterprises. It's equal opportunity, and I just say my daughter probably take over the company faster than my older son. I just want to say that. All right. Hold on. I want to pop that, make sure. Okay. Okay. A little about the company. Landon Ryan, oh, sorry. Make sure I got the right one. Oh, there you go. Yep. Just wanted to give you an agenda. We want to talk about the company profile. We're going to talk about project experience on similar projects that we did in the state of New York. We want to talk about project approach and maybe question and answer after that. A little about us, once again, we were founded in 1999 in Rochester, New York. We are a New York State certified minority-owned firm. We are also a New York State disadvantaged business. We have extensive public and private sector experience around the state, and we have three offices. One is in Rochester, New York, was our headquarters. We have a Syracuse office, and we have an office in Albany. And we have, right, 14 employees at this time. We specialize in construction industry in terms of minority business enterprises, women business enterprises, disadvantaged business enterprises, and small business enterprises. Also, make sure, I want to say this, we also specialize in helping the veterans, the SDVOB firms, if they have a goal for that. And we do EEO compliance, which EEO compliance means workforce participation. All right? With that, MBE and all those acronyms, MBDBE, we also help write policies. We help put programs, the community programs together as far as your diversity. We do community outreach and also public, public involvement. We do safety monitoring on a lot of projects. I myself is a 10, 10 and 30-hour OSHA outreach trainer. And so a lot of times, I'm teaching 10 and 30-hour OSHA classes, or I'm also teaching for, most I do it for the community. I teach flagging classes and also DOT HASCon, which actually helps people to go into, you know, we have a shortage of truckers, and I help them become, you know, become truckers. We also do a lot of construction management, technical supportive services. And once again, we have over 20 years of New York State MWBE compliance, monitoring services. Lloyd Dickerson is going to come and he's going to talk about some of our project experience.
So we chose a few of the projects that kind of was in the same wheelhouse as this, just four of them. The one that we have first is our Syracuse City School District project. We started that around 2011, and it's slated to end around 2022. That is a two-phase project, one, phase one and two. That is about $438 million. On this project, we had about 55 primes and about 120 to 130 subcontractors. Part of our responsibility, we provide MWBE monitoring, onsite progress meetings. What we do is what we call cuff reviews, commercially useful functions. We go to the project to make sure the person or the contractor is slated to that job, is doing that task. We also negotiated the project labor agreement. This project, as you could see here, we had a lot of goals. For people that may not know, MBE stands for minority business enterprise, and WBE is women business enterprise. This project, we exceeded the goal that had a goal of 12% for the minority and 8% for the women. We also had a workforce goal of 10% for the minority and 10% for the women. And this particular one, the superintendent wanted a resident goal. So we also exceeded that goal. It was 20%. And we also had a former student goal of 2%. So this was our biggest project yet with a lot of different goals. Binghamton University, we were on that project in 2014, kind of the same scope, so I won't go through that again. Non-compliance follow-up. We're just trying to show you some of the projects that we were on that we exceeded the goal. This one had a goal of 10%, and we exceeded the MBE goal by six and the WBE goal by 2%. The last two that I have is another city school district project we did, Albany City School District back in '09. That was about $237 million. Less primes on that, about 15 and about 40 subs. For this project, again, we exceeded the goal, their goal, by 3% for the minority businesses and 5% for the women. For the workforce, which some people call local hire also, we exceeded that by 2% and exceeded the female participation goal by 1%. So currently, we're on the Yonkers New Community School Project that just started. I think that's about $68 million. So we updated the diversity plan, also provided diversity front and documents for the bids to go out, and again, provided MWBE and EEO monthly progress reporting. That has an easier goal to remember, 20% for the minority, 10% for the women, same for the workforce, 20% and 10%. So we hope that project will be another successful one that we can present.
Thanks, Lloyd. Also, just want to talk about our project approach when we go after a project. One of them is we want to conduct informational presentation to local minority women-owned businesses, contract associations, church community, business communities. And basically, we want to introduce the project to the minority women-owned businesses, to we need to have encouraged them to bid on the project. All right? So we're going to have to really get out in the community. A lot of times, guys won't bid because they say it's too big, but we show them, we talk about right sizing the project and breaking it down. And also, that's in collaboration with the design team. We want to right-size the project, which basically, we take the big packages and we break it down into smaller packages. With that, is looking at those packages, they want instrumental, make them more interested in it. It's not just helping the minority businesses and the women-owned businesses, but small businesses in the community, they'll look at those big packages and they want to bid on it also. So it creates a lot, generates a lot of interest. And we also want to utilize local media, electronic, and print to market and promote the training and hiring for those businesses. We also want to provide job fairs with trades, local business, to identify qualified workers and to introduce some other programs that will assist them in finding employment. So we had one project that it had a, let's see, it was, the college was involved, we had a supermarket, it was a hotel, we run the construction in and the city, and we have a huge job fair. And basically, we came together and we had a lot of resumes, and even in the retail spots, a lot of those guys were in those job fairs and actually got hired by the hotels and universities. So we had a big, that was a big outing for us with that one. And also, we would reach out to local contract and create interest in the project stated that, but training the guy into assist local contractors submitting bids and getting selected to participate on the bid. Basically, we'd do our outreaches with how, actually, we have one tomorrow for a project that we have. We would do an outreach, and basically, the MBE firms would be there, and the prime contractors, architects would tell them about the projects, and basically tell them who to bid to, who's the big prime contractor, who's the big two, how to fill out the paperwork, and basically, we'd be working with them to kind of integrate them and knowing the other bidders so they can come out to bid. And that usually really helpful in starting off your goals. We would be meeting with high schools and college students and workforce community training groups. Basically, we're going to show them how to participate on the project. In terms of that, we have, you know, as far as internship programs, what we have found, you have a lot of architectural firms, engineering firms, they already have paid internships. So we introduced the community, the college kids, to that, so they can also participate in those internships. All right? And also, with the college kids, we wanted to do career fairs. When we do career fairs, we come into the schools and basically, we talk about, we talk about the trades, we talk about engineering, and also entrepreneurships. You know, I'm a business owner, we talk about that, how they can be a part of that. All right? And also, just examples of how workforce goals are achieved. We conduct workshops to increase local workforce participation. We may come into the community and we have an EEO workshop. A lot of times, guys are kind of on the sidelines, and we come in and we talk to them about getting into the unions or just getting into the trades. And so we talk to them. We also can do that, we can do that not just English, we also can do it in Spanish. All right? We have the capabilities of that. And we work with primes, local unions, to increase local hire as far as their apprenticeship program. Usually apprenticeship programs have a local ratio of how they can hire, but we actually try to get them increase that ratio so we can get them on the project. And then also with this last slide, the scoping meetings will also assess the primes to ensure proper minority and women participation. We call that a minority women utilization plan. And basically, with that minority and utilization plan, we put it at the front-end documents. The prime contractor have to state what minority and women business they're working for, what's the amount they have, and what's the scope of work. We'll look at that to verify that they are true minority-owned businesses. A lot of times, you have some suppliers, the state says, you know, they can count 60% as suppliers. We look at all those numbers. If they don't meet the goal, we'll sit down with the prime contractors, we'll look at his scope of works, and we say, what other areas can you bid out? And then when they give us those other areas, we will get them matching MWBE firms so they can actually bid on it, and that's how we keep achieving the goals. It helps them out, too. Also, we, as far as construction management training programs, Landon and Ryan Enterprises, since we've been in business, we did about four to five construction management training courses. They're about seven to eight weeks. We partner with churches, colleges, construction firms. I know I talked to the superintendent, Syracuse University, which I'm alumni of, is interested in coming in and with their construction management program and actually training the students or people in the community, and they will give college credits for that. So we'd be working on that. All right? And there's some of the topics that we work on as far as the construction management training. Also, Stacy is going to talk about, we do have an electronic compliance audit process that every, you know, everything is automated, so Stacy's going to talk about that.
So our electronic software management system allows us to monitor payments for who, what, when, and how for all subcontractors. In addition, there is also a workforce component that allows us to monitor not just the minority and female workforce, but also allows us to pinpoint local workforce hours. And I will turn it over to Lloyd.
Lloyd, you want to, Lloyd might want to tell how much money as far as the workforce is, not just the workers.
Yeah, currently on our Syracuse project, it's a $300 million project, $74 million stayed in the community, so that's $74 million. Syracuse just has a certification just within the city. They're not using Empire State Certification, so that's 74 million of local contractors, women and minority firms. So this, my last slide today is... Uh, so this, my last slide today is, uh, what we call a project highlight. The mayor in Syracuse, uh, is also on the board and what he likes to see is, okay, what are some of these programs doing? Uh, this particular one is our latest, it's a young lady named Karen Jones. She was on the project for a while as an electrician. Uh, she tried to start her own company in around two thousand fourteen, two thousand eighteen. It was unsuccessful. She tried again in two thousand twenty and successfully started her business. Now Karen, uh, actually has two contracts on the project. She's one of two minority female master electricians in New York. She actually lives in her community, works in her community and now hires in her community. So we do this about once a month and then we try to let people know, uh, in the community that this can be done, so the programs do work. And now if we have any questions and answers, we, yes.
You mentioned a couple of times project labor agreements. Will this have a project labor agreement and will you be negotiating that?
I would like to say.
We'll be prevailing wage though.
Oh yeah.
Work will be prevailing, but have you talked to the, have you talked to the building trades yet?
Just give a little experience, I have about fifteen years working with project labor agreement. Syracuse was a project labor agreement and I was the one that the city kinda put out there to negotiate the project labor agreement. The unions are very happy right now, we exceeded all the numbers. And basically we did have like a sigh letter agreement, a tag along. We actually worked with them to put the tag along, so we, we had to kinda carve it so it can include minority-owned business, it wouldn't be a restriction for it.
Well, I know the, um, uh, for the carpenters, for example, um, I just met with them last week and they had their first graduating class of, um, uh, women, uh, for their apprenticeship programs. There was ten, ten women that began the program and eight graduated. So they're anxious to, um, look at projects like this where, you know, and as you know, anytime there's federal or state money, uh, labor unions want to make sure they're, that money's staying local. So, uh, whatever you can do in the area of project labor agreements would be appreciated, to at least, um, speak with the Hudson Valley Building Trades.
And we just wanted to close out by, um, you know, make sure that, um, we recognize that Middletown is a city that is rich with history and, um, it's really our goal, not only to create, um, this beautiful building of twin towers, um, which sits so perfectly situated right in a community with so much access, um, by foot or by car, um, that we continue to highlight the beauty that that building has, but also, um, many years from now, have it be a space where, um, families that are moving into the area can look back and say, not only did they sort of, um, you know, participate in, um, you know, growing the, the building, um, by, you know, voting and, you know, um, support of the project, but, um, more than that, they can participate in the workforce that will be part of the creation of the building. So we want folks to be able to, um, zoom out and stand back years from now and look at the building and say, I'm proud not only because I'm a member of the school community or I live in the community or in the region, but I also participated in, you know, um, doing the sheet rock on, in, in part of that section or the, um, the brickwork or, you know, any of the other, um, jobs that would be available to the community. Um, so we feel really, um, proud to be able to deliver this project, um, proposal to the community. Really excited, um, and blessed to have so much partnership between, um, this city and the mayor, um, the town of Wallkill and, um, you know, the many voices that we've had on it. So we'll take any other questions, um, but thank you for, um, the opportunity to present tonight.
Alderman Tobin?
Alderman Tobin.
Yeah, I mean, as a former coach, I really am proud of the Middletown facilities as I've, I've gone through the county, through all the different buildings. We really have some top-notch, uh, facilities. Also, uh, what was I gonna say? Uh, I had a, also as a, I'm also another hat I wear, I'm on the state board for the statewide union, uh, board of directors. And I know we're trying to do the community school, uh, model throughout the state, there's only a few areas that have used it. And I think it's a great idea to lower the barriers, uh, that our children face to an education, whether it's dental services, eyeglasses, or, uh, bringing those, those services into the school, making it a community school. So I applaud you for that, that's an excellent, uh, move. And I just had a question about the residency. Uh, how are we track, how do you track that? I mean, do you, are you keeping track of like their addresses, where they're writing the checks? Or, uh, you know, someone could say they have the Middletown, they have an apartment, ten people live in there. I, I'm just curious how, how you keep track of that.
Yeah, so what we do is during the big documents, we have what they call work, uh, attestation form. So we require that and for it to be signed and submitted and that has all of their address on it. And then we put that into our system and it tracks to make sure there's no double counting. So if you have someone and they move and then has the certified payrolls come in, it will, I did, will be able to identify that that person is either being double counted or has moved or is no longer on the project. That helps us keep a track of who's there and who's not. So when you submit a workforce projection to us as a contractor and say you're gonna hire this amount of minority women, we follow that throughout the process. So every month we're updated, we don't wait till the end of the project. So then if someone falls through the crack, we know within the thirty days.
Alderman Johnson?
I had a question for the superintendent. I know Mr. Tuttle is in here and I may defer. Um, you, you mentioned several sources, including what were you called, capital reserve? So I'm not sure if fund balance is still a term used in public education, but there used to be guidelines of maximum and minimum. Where does that number end, where does that number land at the end of the project? The fund balance or whatever it's called.
Sure, so I'll just go back.
Or I'll defer to Mike if it's not appropriate.
So I think this is what, the slide that you were referring to. And so we have, or maybe actually just one slide back might help explain it a little further. There we go. Um, so we are using just over seventeen, um, million dollars of our capital reserve. So in two thousand and seventeen, um, the voters approved a twenty-million-dollar, um, capital reserve. And so we, there is five million dollars left in that capital reserve. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, um, we created a, the voters approved on the creation of a second capital reserve with twelve million dollars in, in it. So that seventeen million is those two accounts combined together. And the reason why we do those capital reserves, present those to the community for their voter, um, approval is exactly for projects like this, so that when it comes time to do capital improvements, we have, um, the funding to support them without increasing, um, the tax levy.
Very good, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? Well, I appreciate your time, thank you for the presentation, great job.
One more plug, December fourteenth, come out and vote. Thank you very much.
Take a break, two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine McMenamy and I live at nineteen Willow Place. I was in about a month ago and, uh, presented two situations. First, I'd like to say the tree in Middletown looks wonderful, the Christmas tree. I'd like to thank Benjamin, uh, Jacob and, uh, the DPW team. They did straighten out some of the, um, excess foliage in the back of Willow Place that borders on the railroad. I'm optimistic enough to hope that perhaps in the spring, they'll be able to do additional work cleaning out the canals themselves. The other reason I came is because of the, um, temporary ice rink that I had suggested uh, as a possibility that Middletown might be interested in putting something like this up for the entertainment of the children and the families in the city. So I'm just here today. My idea hasn't gotten lost by me and I hope it has not gotten lost by all of you. And, um, I just wanna keep it going. So, um, to see perhaps, I don't know if it's doable for this year. If it's not, then I will be back. Thank you very much. Oh, great, great.
It's a good idea and we've actually have been looking at, uh, doing something in Festival Square with, um, artificial ice over the last couple of years. And, uh, your, uh, comment at the last meeting, we started exploring some, doing something different. We spoke into different vendors and, um, and we're actually now looking at the pavilion area for doing, uh, real ice with refrigeration from say October, mid-October to, uh, you know, to March or so. So we are exploring it. Uh, we've, Ray Lynn is here, she has, uh, proposals on the artificial ice, but we're hearing downsides to that. And we've moved our focus from like a, um, just something over by the Christmas tree, something small, to something larger over thirty by eighty over at the pavilion. Won't happen this year, but, um, I'm, we're hoping that the council will approve one of the funding requests, which will be, we anticipate, um, I think the project to be around a hundred thousand dollars, which isn't all that unreasonable, with refrigeration. And, um, we're hoping to have presented to the council formally when we get more of the, um, concepts from the, from the developers. But the, uh, it hasn't gone on deaf ears, Maria's been on the fake ice for probably about two years now. But we're off the fake ice, we're on the real ice, so thank you for pushing it and keep coming back.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Evening, how are you?
My name is Ken Delu, uh, one-seventy Manhattan Avenue. Uh, two quick things. Uh, the first is this Sunday, December twelfth, at, um, St. John's Lutheran Church, uh, we'll be doing a brass concert of holiday and Christmas music. It's at three PM and it is a benefit concert for the warming station here in the city of Middletown. So, uh, we've been doing this concert for al- almost fifteen years. Last year we had to kinda put a kibosh on it, uh, we, everything was virtual. So we're back to live music, so it's open to the public. Um, again, it's at St. John's Lutheran Church and if you don't know where that is, just go out West Main Street, hit County Route seventy-eight, about a thousand feet up the road on the left-hand side. So, um, it is a free concert and, uh, we just kinda passed the hat. And whatever we get for, you know, for proceeds, we give that to the warming station to help them with their budget. And any questions on that? And then, uh, the second thing, I fist pumped, uh, Jacob on the way in. Um, as a resident of Manhattan Avenue, um, we really love looking at the forest across the street at the psych center. Uh, but, uh, come, come fall, it is a leaf nightmare. And, uh, hit, uh, Jacob and his, his people, they were out there, they were really proactive this year and they raked up mountains of, uh, of leaves. And I thanked him and I just wanna publicly thank him and his, his staff for doing an excellent job. So, um, it's, it's a lot of stress to see all those leaves with the prevailing winds coming your way. So, uh, they're, they're gone and, uh, Jacob, thank you, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, remarks to the mayor. I wanna thank the, um, interim superintendent and, and, uh, Landon, Landon and Ryan and all those who spoke for the excellent presentation. We, um, um, it's gonna be a good project for Middletown for, and as I said in my opening with the, um, for the taxpayers of our city also. Move on. As was mentioned a few times, the Christmas tree lighting was absolutely, probably the best one we've had. I mean, uh, people, uh, came out, uh, the event was, um, uh, the parade was long and, uh, kids had fun. Uh, the only thing we didn't do post, um, uh, lighting was the, uh, Wonderful Life at the Theater. We hope to have that back next year and we didn't do it for obvious reasons with COVID. And, um, having that many people into the theater, especially kids, you know, we can do social distancing with, you know, with some adults and mask wearing, but we didn't wanna put that many kids into the theater. So, um, I think we made the right call on that. But next year we'll, um, we're hoping to expand the program a little bit. Maria and her crew did an excellent job. I wanna thank all the agencies and departments that were involved in it, Police Department, Jackie Welch, Parks Department, uh, Ray Lynn and her crew. So, um, it was an excellent job by you all. Uh, we also, um, we had the menorah lighting that Monday, uh, at Something Sweet or Run for Downtown Park. And, uh, it was well-attended. The school also participated, I believe it was the third, fourth and fifth grade choir from, um, I think it was from Presidential. Maple Hill, okay, from Maple Hill. And, um, it was well-attended and, um, a little bit, you know, shorter program, but, um, and it was a little colder also. But, uh, it was a great program and, uh, so I wanna thank Temple Sinai and the new Rabbi, Rabbi Colbert. Cobert, I, I keep making her French, I asked her too. I'm watching too much late-night TV, Colbert, right? Uh, Rabbi Cobert and, um, and the members of Temple Sinai for, um, for once again, this was the fourth annual that we had and we hope the tradition carries many, many more years. Uh, we have good news on the OWW project. And you're gonna be voting on a couple of things tonight. And I, I did send out some emails today regarding the project to you. But, the, um, as you know, right now, the, where we stand with the project, we have, uh, two million dollars that was, um, put into the New York State budget by Assemblywoman Gunther. And that money is committed, um, and that was under the New York State Capital Assistance Program. Uh, the home program from the county is an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. That's still pending, we've heard good things about it, uh, so we're pretty confident that's going to happen. We also have pending from the state, a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar Environmental Protection Fund grant. Um, we haven't heard, um, much other than it's been advanced to the next level and that's the last that we've heard about that. But we're still considering it as an opportunity for funding. The CDBG CARES Act, um, which is, um, federal and state money, it's federal money through the state, um, that we have received the verbal and I think a written commitment on, uh, from Albany, so that is four-point-one-million dollars. A portion of that is going to be used for the head start, the ABCD build-out within the building. So the total project cost is now increased because we're gonna be doing some of the build-out. So project funding in place at this moment or pending, um, is seven-point-six-five million. The, tonight, as you know, in order to receive some of those grants that we made a commitment to them, that the city would be committing a million dollars in funding, this may be some, in some in-kind services. Um, but, um, we would be, um, what we talked about the project was it's better to spend a million to get it rehabbed than a million to a million and a half to tear the building down, especially such an iconic structure. So tonight, in order to start drawing on those other funds, we need to show the state that we are making a commitment to funding. So that will be one of the resolutions. And the other resolution is to appropriate three million from the American Recovery Plan money, the ARPA funding into this project. Project is absolutely eligible for this federal funding. Um, it meets all the guidelines, all the COVID guidelines, um, especially with the ABCD program there. So the total project cost is, um, about eleven-point-six-million dollars, as you saw in the emails today, that we're pretty confident and that was a draft email that was sent to you today, um, that we're pretty confident that we're gonna be able to get this project done within the timeline. I spoke a project labor agreement, um, with the school district, that was my question to them. And we have, um, retained a firm to, um, uh, do the feasibility study of having a project labor agreement. And it looks very favorable now that, uh, the city will save significant money by going that route. And that document, once it's final, we'll be making it public as part of the public record, but right now it's in draft form and we're just talking about it, but, um, but we're excited about it. I have met with the building trades, they're excited about moving ahead on the project also. Uh, tonight you will also be voting on the engineer for the project. Um, as you know, um, Mr. Fusco was very much involved in this project, um, with the Middletown Community Health Center and has done a lot of work for the city, preliminary work on a per-day basis. Um, he's also, uh, one of four applicants, uh, that we received on the RFP. All qualified and all, uh, very qualified. And, um, Jacob has a letter of recommendation tonight to award it to, uh, Mr. Fusco. Um, it's a close call with all of the companies, but, uh, Fusco has a history on the project as maybe one or two of the others do also. But I think he has a much more extensive history on it. Um, and has done a lot of the preliminary work when he was with the Middletown Community Health Center. So, um, he's local, um, he is bringing in a big outfit to work with him. So I'm confident that he'll be able to do the job. Um, I know Jacob, um, has made a recommendation. Um, there were, I think out of the four applicants, I think Jacob was a principal or partner with two of them. So, uh, but that was probably, uh, more than twenty years ago. So, um, so I felt comfortable in the fact of asking Jacob for a recommendation, um, based on his, um, commitment and his role here in the city and he is making that recommendation to the council and I concur, uh, with the recommendation. So, we're excited about getting this project moving. As you know, the, um, the feasibility study timeline is very important because some of these funds have timelines attached to them where the money must be spent, um, within a certain period of time. So we're, um, So, we're anxious to get moving, and we're anxious to hire the engineer, or at least tonight would be approving him, designate him. And then, the next step is negotiating the contract, which will, I believe, come back to you also. So, or will become, you know, with Jacob's recommendation. And it's basically standard fees and standard rates. So, we're excited about it, and I hope you're as excited as I am and that you'll get this project moving tonight. The COVID cases, as you know, are, were going backwards in some areas, including Orange County. I saw the article today focused on 5 to 11, where Orange County is one of the low counties in New York State, Orange, Rockland, and some counties upstate, that with vaccination rates for kids 5 to 11. I could tell you, my grandson is home now for the second time in three weeks on quarantine because someone in the, in the school or in his unit or whatever, how they break it down, has been exposed. And it's no way that we can continue this. So, we need to get our kids vaccinated. We need to get people, our adults vaccinated. People are dying. Miguel will tell you, the school, the hospitals are filling up again. And the only way around this is vaccination or something that we're going to live with. So, hopefully, people will reconsider, talk to your doctor, get the vaccination. We're approaching 1,000 deaths in Orange County alone, and I think we're approaching 800,000 nationally. So, and then, I think, 4 or 5 million throughout the world. So, please consider it. It's important. So, for Christmas, maybe get a vaccination. And do the community a favor, also give us all a gift. And also shop small. And I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, if I don't make it, or if I don't see you at the next meeting. And happy holidays to all. And any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Any question for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks of the department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. This past week, we had a couple more ribbon cuttings. Downtown Village on Montgomery Street, as you know, vacant warehouse in that area was renovated by developer Sal Vasipoly, and he had a ribbon cutting, 21 apartments and commercial space as well. And also, Painted Horse Chocolate as Rail Trail Commons. As you know, she was part of our Race for Space competition at that location. And I'm pleased to say that she is going to start opening to the public on December 11th. That's this weekend. And they're working hard, they're filling the store with all kinds of chocolate goodies. So, go visit them starting this weekend. Also, this evening, we had a CDA, Community Development Agency, meeting and reported that with some more accomplishments for housing rehab for our homeownership program, we'll hopefully reach 14 properties that we rehabbed and put families into. So, we're pretty proud of that number. And I too want to thank everybody regarding the tree lighting. It was amazing night, as the mayor mentioned. And especially my team, Stefania, Eileen, Joseph, and Caitlin, the bid office, and, you know, just everybody pulled together, police, fire, DPW, Park and Rec, all the participants, the school district, all the volunteers, you know, you may not see some of the volunteers that are out there helping us as well. So, it was just an amazing night, and thank you to everybody. That's all I have.
Any question for Maria? Paul McCliner?
Hi, Maria. Would you just mention also the Mulberry House dedication, the GMIC Warming Center? Because that's since our last meeting.
Correct, we did have a third ribbon cutting, yes. Losing track here. Yes, the warming station opened on November 19th, and we had the dedication on November 16th. And that too was a really great event, and everybody came together to make that happen as well in our community and launched a successful program right on Mulberry Street. And thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
So, we had three ribbon cuttings. Thanks.
Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. We'll start off with the alderman, Massey. The reservoirs are full, we're in great shape. We're in good shape with the water situation. And the pump station at the water treatment plant, we're approaching the startup. The electrician has to finish, I think he's got a couple of more weeks. And adding more security cameras in there and invisible fence around certain areas, that will be done, and then hopefully, we'll have the startup. After that, we will retire the pump station that's been running at the water treatment plant since 1989, non-stop. And I'm happy to report that I designed that pump station, me and Jeff Schumard. So, it's when we were consultants, working for the city. The water temporary pavement has been removed at Manhattan Avenue. So, the local alderman in there and the council president, you know, it's done, and that's still temporary because we're going to go back after the project is completed, and we're going to mill from the edge of the road to the center line of the road, just like we do with any other project, and repave it. So, this is still temporary, but it's much better than what it was before. The contractor is resuming the installation of the 20-inch, 24-inch water main, and he's going to be going into psychiatric center, former psychiatric center campus, and all the way to the first entrance of the psychiatric center of Manhattan Avenue, which is closer to the city, closer to West Main. On Friday, we're having some legal issues that I've been reporting to you with this water line, certain sections of that water line. This Friday, we're going to be having a meeting with our attorneys, specialty attorneys, and the contractors' attorneys, and we'll see if we can be on the same page and come up with certain agreements. So, we will update you. But that's attorneys and legal issues at this time with certain sections of it, not the whole water line. So, the whole water line installation continues, the contractor is doing a great job, and they're trying their best. Before you tonight, just, we auctioned off some equipment for DPW and vehicles, old vehicles. That resolution before you, we generate about more than $63,000 in there for us, just getting rid of some junk equipment. Heritage Trail, the mayor did not report to you about it. We've been, we've been meeting with them, with the engineers and with the contractors and with the county. And within a couple of weeks, the whole trail will be done, and hopefully, it will be open. The only thing is, the only hang-up right now is the rails over the bridges that cross over Janong Street and Sprague, because it has to be made in America, the steel, as condition of DOT in there. And they brought steel that was not, railing that was not made in America, so that has caused some delay. So, that's the only thing that will hold us back from opening up the Heritage Trail from the Switch N or East Main Street all the way back to tie into the Goshen section by Hartley Road. The leaves, just a reminder, we are done putting out leaves and yard waste. So, please, we're trying to catch up with the city going all over again. So, please do not put any more leaves outside, do not rake anymore, because we just, it's going to snow possibly tomorrow. It will be hazardous condition in there because our trucks, they're going to come in and plow the road, and they may not see the leaves, the piles of the leaves, because they're covered or what have you. They're going to spread them all over the place. It becomes slippery, it's hazardous. So, whatever you've done, that's the end of it. We advertise that well ahead of time to let you know when the deadline is, which was last weekend. So, please, you know, refrain from putting any more leaves because it will be hazardous to everyone. We appreciate that very much. The following week, if this continues, we're going to have to send code enforcement, unfortunately, and do some enforcement. We don't want to do that. So, please help us out. It's for your safety and your neighborhood's safety. No more leaves on the street or yard waste. Were we on the avenue also? That was a problem in there with the temporary pavement. Orange and Rockland did that. They milled and paved the road from the edge to the center line of the road. I think it's very nice, and it's acceptable. The mayor mentioned Alfusco in there and my recommendation to award, to award the project to Alfusco. And, you know, Middletown is a small town. I've been here since 1984. Like the mayor said, I was principal, you know, one of seven principals with Clark Patterson, 220-person firms, engineers and architects. I was one of, one of seven principals in there. Now, the firm is 500 people, you know, doubled. But, you know, Fusco, I was partnered with him. It used to be Fusco, the wheel engineering. So, you know, I can't turn left or right except without bumping into people. I had previous, it's a small, small place, and I had association with many people around here. So, that's why. But, so, that's why I had to mention it, but I had to make the recommendation for Fusco because of his previous knowledge, working on the grants with the mayor and Maria and his knowledge with the, with the plans, with the history, the institutional knowledge, and so on and so forth. Otherwise, the four firms that submitted for it, Lan Architects out of Goshen, CPL Clark Patterson Lee, and Capola, AJ Capola, and Fusco, all of them, they can handle it. Fusco has got big muscle coming with him, teaming up with him, an architectural firm. So, I'm very comfortable that he can do the job. And it's the very compressed timeline because of the grants. And that's why, you know, it's just within six months, he has to produce final plans and so on and so forth. So, we can't have, we can't start fresh. I was impressed, again, with the qualifications of all of the four firms that submitted. Any one of them, four can do it. But because of the time issue in there, I felt that my recommendation to you is to award it to Alfusco. New York Rising Projects in there, the project pretty much is completed for West Main Street. Now, we have to work on some concrete curbs and sidewalks. The project came under budget. It's a grant from the governor under New York Rising. So, we're going to be adding more curbs and sidewalks all the way up to Maple Avenue. And we're going to go down from the bridge, down as far as we can to use up all the money that's available. So, that's an additional curbs and sidewalks. We discussed that today with New York Rising and the contractor and the engineers, and hopefully, we can pull it off. That should be done within a couple of weeks, three weeks, the whole, the whole thing. The same with Grant Street, Culvert. We have money left over in the budget, and we're going to be adding curbs and sidewalks because they are badly needed over there in Grant Street as well. So, we'll be replacing as much as we can. It's outside the scope of the project, but we have additional funding remaining, and we'll be able, hopefully, to use them for curbs and sidewalks and additional paving. And I'm very happy to see the plans for the school, Twin Towers. There's a pull-off in there for the students to drop off. It's extremely safe. We've been advocating that with the school district, I have been, for years. And I'm glad to finally see it happen in there. It's going to be much safer, much less concerned with the traffic and people getting run over. And I'm hoping that the Orange County Community College will do the same in front of the Commons and South Street, because we suggested that to them when I used to meet with their safety committee years and years ago. And that is very much needed. Hopefully, so, hopefully, Orange County Community College will do the same and have a pull-off for the buses in there to drop student. It will be less likely to have accidents or human tragedies in there. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
Oh, I'm sorry, John, I'm sorry. John Numchuk, I have it in my notes. I'm, you know, I'm very, I'm very happy that, for him, that he's going to be retiring and relaxing, but he will be sorely missed. I dealt with him, he's been reliable. Whatever we wanted, he spit it out immediately for us in terms of documents, contracts. I will miss him very much, and I wish him the very best.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to welcome Richard aboard. You've got some pretty big shoes to fill. I will be upsetting you a few times, so. But just want to let you know, Phoenix Engine Company Number Four will be doing their Santa Parade on December 18th, so keep an eye out for it. They will be following all the city and CDC guidelines for the COVID. To date, we have 837 calls, and there's a couple of resolutions in front of you tonight, looking for your support. And wish to, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday. John, I'm going to miss you, buddy. Take care.
All right, thanks, chief.
Any questions? No, thanks.
Please, chief.
Good evening. Just a few things this evening I'd like to address. First is, it's a, it's a topic of concern. Some of you may have heard of it. This past Sunday, December 5th, about 7:25 PM on Watkins Avenue, we had an incident that caught a lot of people's attention, specifically ours, because of the nature of it. The family at that location had, were subject to someone shooting pellets or BBs at their menorah that was inflated in front of their home. They reported it to us the following day because they weren't sure that it actually occurred that night. They did capture a portion of the incident on some video that they had, and we are doing everything we can to try to follow up on that video. Detectives have been assigned to the case, and we are diligently working it. But we are also looking for some support from the community, see if anybody has any additional information or any knowledge or anything that they could point us in the right direction. And if they do, there's multiple ways to share that information with us, through Nixle, through our tip line. You could call us, you could email us, whatever it may be. But anything that we can get to help us bring this to a conclusion is greatly appreciated. As I said, this is a serious situation to us, and we take it very serious, and we'll do everything we can to address that. Additionally, we are seeing a small uptick in deaths. In this time of year, it's even a little bit more prevalent, packages in vehicles, unlocked vehicles for the most part, some mail being, you know, removed from porches or sidewalks. So, what I ask is if people could take that extra precaution, make sure you lock your doors, make sure you, you do what you can to ensure that someone maybe could get a package or sign for a package. But at the same time, let's be neighborly, and let's look out for our neighbors as well. Keep an eye out. We know if our neighbors are home or not home, who's shit and shouldn't be there. And I think that would definitely help us curb some of this. And give us a call if people do see any type of suspicious activity. Let us look into it. If nothing else, we send the person on their way, and someone doesn't lose any, any of their hard-earned gifts or packages. Additionally, today, another call of concern. We dealt with this many years ago. Several of you, many of you in here are familiar with it, the swatting calls that we dealt with at the school many years ago. It was an ongoing situation for some time. Since then, today's the first time we've dealt with that. It was not at the school. It was at a local residence. It came in as a person shot. Through investigation, we realized that it was a swatting call. And also, through investigation, we realized that a neighboring town had a similar call just prior to us. So, we have our resources working on that. We learned a lot from the last time this occurred, so we are jumping right back onto that same platform to see if we could track this person down and hold them accountable. On a positive, or actually, not on a positive note, just some, some follow-up also. Throughout the summer, we've talked on several occasions, sometimes privately, sometimes openly in the meeting, about some of the youth activities that are taking place, some of the violence or crime that is associated with youth. This year, we saw a majority of our more serious crimes were related to our youth population. To try to address some of that, we partnered with the school district, our Parks and Rec, some of our other community partners and community leaders. And on November 15th, we did an intervention. What we did is we identified through our sources and through the school sources, groups of people or of youth that have kind of not been doing the right thing in our eyes. We invited them and their families in. We had a candid conversation with them, explained to them what is going on, the consequences of their poor behavior. And hopefully, we got through to some of them. We did it one other time back in 2019. It was pretty successful, so we gave it another shot. And, you know, if we could, you know, connect with a few of them and give them some other resources to put their energy into, I think it would be successful. On that same note, and this comes basically from a letter from the school, it kind of caught my attention, in regards to the same stuff as far as youth behavior. Again, bring it back to us looking out for our neighbors, looking out for the people and our families, our friends. It takes a village to raise a child. That's an old saying. It still goes true today. So, if we see one of our family members acting out, if we see a neighbor, someone that's affiliated with us, please take the time to address that. But also, at the same time, address that positive behavior that they do as well, so they, they know there's encouragement for good, good choices as well. So, a few meetings ago, I had mentioned that we had... So a few meetings ago, I had mentioned that we had, the Middletown Police had received a, a grant. So we've actually pretty much finalized that grant. It's a $20,000 grant for the, through the Youth Bureau from New York State. And we've worked with the partners, the Orange County Youth Bureau, and came up with a plan and agenda for our funding. And beginning January 12th, we are going to host a Middletown Police Youth Leadership Academy. It's a 12 week program. We're going to start January 12th. It's going to be Wednesday nights from 3:30 to 6:00 PM. As part of the grant, we are afforded the opportunity to provide food for the participants, transportation for the participants. And we have a pretty full agenda to include topics such as police community relations, leadership skills, dangers of narcotics, social media safety, resume, resume building, teamwork and team projects. And as an additional to the 12 weeks, we are offering some additional classes to the participants where they could leave being AED, CPR and Narcan certified. So we're hoping that they get some great takeaways, that we have some great participation. We're looking for 20 to 25 participants in the age range from 13 to about 19. So if anyone knows anyone that may be a good participant, please put them in touch with Sergeant Welch, 346-4032. And we'd be looking forward to working with them. And lastly, I'd like to also congratulate John Numchuk. John, thank you, it's been a pleasure. I wish you the best in your retirement. As Jacob said, you've always done everything you can for us, all of us here. So thank you for that. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the police chief? Alderman Johnson?
Got a question, just we, we discussed some informal co-changes that were coming from my committee.
Yes.
When you and Alex are ready for that, I'll schedule a meeting.
I'm ready, yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening. If you know any youth who are in need of any extra holiday help or cheer, this Saturday, we're collaborating with HJ, HJM Management to do a toy drive for the youth. It is a, you must pre-register. It's found on our Bass registration site or Facebook. Also this Saturday, if you check our, if you've seen our Facebook page, with Middletown Police Department, Fire Department, DPW and the school district, we are doing a, another holiday parade. Our route is listed on our Facebook page, so please check it out. We are not driving through the streets this time, we are going through the school parking lot. So make sure you check out the Facebook page for the exact routes and locations. Our winter break program registration is currently up. That week, they have no school, Monday, December 27th to Friday, December 31st, we are having our winter break program, so register your kids now. We also have a sketching class and all of our free fitness classes you could register for. A quick maintenance update, all of our bathrooms and parks have been winterized. You've noticed, I'm sure, a lot of the high winds lately. So our, John Bianchi and his crew have been very busy cleaning up a lot of the down trees on the reservoir trails and also a lot of leaf removal in the parks and on the reservoir chairs, trails, keeping them clear. The Capitol Project, that reservoir is going on the Van Duser lot, the new roof is on. They are currently working on the water line going into the building and they are going to begin tapping into the septic tank and the power is being connected there. They are also working on a memorial bench and path for Ron Leibel at Davich Park. And one last thing, again, like everyone else, congratulations to John Numchuk and welcome to Rick McCormick. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, excellent report. City clerk, which one wants to come up? All right, Rick, it's yours.
Thank you, everybody, for welcoming this evening. I do have certainly some big shoes to fill and I'm looking forward to working with everybody.
Awesome. Any question for Rick? All right. Marks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
John, thank you for all the years of service. It was a pleasure working with you and Rick, I look forward to working with you. And just in case I can't make the next meeting, all my, I want to wish all my colleagues and everyone out there Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and whatever faith you're in, that your holidays are good, safe and enjoyable.
Alderman Tobin?
Same thing. Welcome, Rick, and thank you for all your years of service, John. And happy holidays. And the, the tree lighting was excellent. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback and compliments about how great it was and how people missed it. So thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yeah, John, thank you is not enough. It's been a pleasure. From the moment I, you know, stepped foot in here, you've been a guiding light in, in certain areas and have definitely been able to help me through the ropes and you know, you definitely earned your, your well deserved retirement. And Rick, welcome. It's nice to have you here with us and you do have big shoes to fill, but I mean, we're sure you're up to the task and John will definitely leave you in a good spot. We will be having a second work constituents meeting on Monday, the 13th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. We do ask because of the uptick in COVID, everyone, please come in masked and we will have a safe indoor meeting. Look forward to seeing you there. Tree lighting, menorah lighting, oh man, all the ribbon cuttings, especially, you know, we have that great dedication of the warming station. It was really nice to see such a large crowd there and support and especially to see Rabbi Schwab there, you know, who definitely was there from the very beginning. I just want to say, because there's so many projects going on right now, whether it be through the city here, through the school district, I mean, you know, with the Heritage Trail and everything and the ONW Station. When we say Middletown's moving forward, when we talk about that in, in campaigns and things like that, that's what we mean. Things are definitely moving forward, things are getting better. Things are just becoming great and, and it's definitely a pleasure to be a part of this and to have so many opportunities afforded to our community. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Paving on my Monaghan duly noted, thank you very much. Friday night, I think Maria and her crew are one of those unique organizations to take something that's relatively complicated and make it look deceptively simple. And thank you for that. I agree with the mayor, it was unprecedented in recent past. I think everybody was in the mood to do something good and I think that fit the bill. So thank you all for that. With respect to John, nobody's going to miss John more than I do. So just be clear on that. He's been my sherpa and kept me out of trouble on many occasions. Mr. McCormick, most of what he told you about me, if anything, is going to be true. So deal with that as you can. And as was alluded to, Rick and I were on the school board together a very long time ago. And I did refer to him as young Rick at that time because I think you were probably the youngest school board member in the state of New York ever. And I do have permission to still call him young Rick if I have to. So thank you very much and welcome.
I bet you walk for.
Extremely. Makes me older than dirt, so.
Alderman Cassu?
Good evening. I just, John, I, there are no words, okay? You know everything on, you don't even have to look it up. It's been years of like endless questions and you always having the answer and me never having my paperwork in on time and being endlessly patient. So I don't know how you put up with this that long, but God bless you and enjoy your retirement. Rick, Nick was right, we are all going to upset you at some point. So we all apologize in advance and you'll forgive us, I hope. The tree lighting was amazing. It really was a great year. I've been to so many of them. But if you are a part of this community in any way, shape or form, it's just another one of those nights where you're really, really happy to be a midi. It just feels really good to be a part of this community sometimes and those nights really highlight it and everything that rec and police department and DPW and Maria and your crew, you guys do to make that happen. It is magical, it was magical. We love even just driving by the tree and like, it's great, it's so great. So that's all I'd say about that. It was outstanding. For the school project, I just want to state that we really do have an outstanding school district here. I know there's been a lot of things going on, but at the end of the day, what our children have in terms of opportunities when it comes to athletics and academics and technology and all these opportunities that are here, I am lucky enough to have kids who are taking advantage of all of them and they are astonishing and endless and I'm proud of this district and I'm really excited about the way this district and the, the city have really kind of come together over recent years and we're just going to do great things and it's really cool. So with that, I will stop speaking. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Welcome, Rick. It's going to be interesting, I'm sure. And John, you know, John's gone above and beyond so many times. Always had everything he needed and it, to just as Alderman Massey said, it's just been a pleasure. It's always been such a positive experience working with John. So, and we know he'll be around for a few more weeks, so we're going to take advantage of that too. The GMIC warming station, the dedication was amazing. Rabbi Schwab came up for it. It was cold and windy. The mayor says, be brief. They, they said be brief. John, Rabbi Schwab says, I'm never brief. So we got a full history of the warming station, but it's, it's such an amazing project and the, the dedication of that, well, they still overnight volunteers, middletownwarmingstation.com. With COVID, it's, it's more difficult to get volunteers, so that's, they are also accepting two hour volunteers. They make it a lot easier during that busy time and the overnight. So if there's any chance you can do that, please give a night or a couple hours or an overnight if you can. The tree lighting, the holiday parade, the menorah lighting was an amazing event, especially since, you know, after last year, this was the community on a really cold and windy night coming together and really coming out and supporting the city. And you wouldn't know that happened and you wouldn't know GMIC warming station happened if you read the local paper. And my, my comment to the editors there has been, we don't have a local paper anymore. I was told that, well, they don't cover ribbon cuttings anymore and they don't cover parades. And you can imagine how that got me going. And I said, this was not a ribbon cutting story and this was not a tree lighting story. This is a COVID recovery story. This has a history of, of conflict and working through things and the city is stepping up and taking COVID recovery funds and doing an amazing job after last year and difficulties in the neighborhood and with Temple Sinai and, and the whole congregation. And what, what's, we've come up with, as Maria has told us and the mayor has told us in the past, has been called one of the five best uses of COVID recovery funds in the entire country. And the tree lighting, well, we've renovated and redid downtown and it's now the John F. Degnan Square. And the tree's in a whole different location and the city came out and supported that in an amazing way and took part in that. That's a COVID recovery story. That's not a tree lighting story. And that tree came from Twin Towers, you know, built, built during the Roosevelt Recovery Period. It was one of those projects. So it's a history story, it's a continuing story and apparently they wouldn't know a story if it hit them on the head and sometimes you do that. We still need them because we need a official legal source to print our advertisements in for the city. But other than that, I don't see why anybody would need the record for anything. Sorry to say. One, one little negative, more complaints about the YMCA and their lack of even asking people to be vaccinated. They are definitely on the side of the virus. They don't care about masks, they don't care about vaccinations, they only care about their bottom line and not upsetting the unvaccinated people and hoping they won't cancel their membership. So it's been an issue and the way they've handled it has been extremely disappointing. This Saturday, December 11th at 2:00 PM in the Town Hall, in the Town of Walk Hill, the Town of Walk Hill Historical Association, and I mention this because there's going to be a presentation by Fred Isicks, Dr. Fred Isicks and by Andy Mills, two great Middletown residents. And it's going to be on the original roads and turnpikes in Orange County. And specifically focusing on the Goshen Turnpike and the amount of history with that, you wouldn't believe. So if you get a chance, I, I hope you can turn out. And other than that, just, I, I hope to be here two weeks from tonight and wish everyone, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, but say it ahead of time, have a, have a wonderful holiday season anyway. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson Swa?
Yes, good evening. I have to disagree with Alderman Johnson. I think I'm going to miss John more than you do. John, I think you're a rock star. You know, many times I recall you, I could see, you know, just by listening to your voice until I call you so many times, I could see the frustration, but you always come through. But you know, like I said, you're a rock star, John. We definitely are missing you. Congratulations, Rick. And how can you not talk about the tree lighting? I mean, and when I first left my home, it was so cold, the whole time thinking, no, no one's going to come out for this because it's too cold. And, and as you started walking the parade, get closer to downtown, I turned around, I said, wow, there was so many folks out there, I couldn't believe it. And the whole time thinking, well, this is what COVID does, you know, all year, people just looking to venture to see what's going on. And it's, it's great to see everyone came out and support that. Maria, you and your staff, I think you guys have done yourself this time. And Commissioner, in the last meeting, we mentioned, we had a brief request for Wurayanda and, and Monaghan Avenue. You guys did a wonderful job and it was quickly done. As a matter of fact, with the gas prices so high, I'd be taking a longer trip just to go around to avoid that area. And thank you, I'm saving a lot of money just by you fixing that road. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Good evening. I also have to congratulate John. I'll be missing him. Any leader to have John on their side, John makes us look really, really good, especially up here. John is the, probably one of the most organized persons I have met in my career here. We, we share, from day one, John would call me every minute, from good to bad. Even when we had the active shooter, he would call me and say, there's a man walking around in City Hall with a gun. And I remember that day and I said, John, hang up and call the police. I said, please, don't call me, you know? And you know, we, we, we've gone through a lot of good, a lot of long meetings and John, John's been there for us for a very, very, very long time and well deserved. I hate to see you go, but I know, you know, we can always count on you and I know Rick is already getting in the right groove, you're ready. I know the whip is out, so you know, I, I appreciate everything and I congratulate you from the bottom of my heart because I, I will miss you a lot. So thank you. New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the mayor to sign and enter into an agreement with County of Orange for the extension of the Title III B Senior Transportation Agreement effective January 1st, 2022.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll. Oh, it's Alderman, Alderman Kleiner?
And I'm going to use this resolution just to say, one thing I forgot to say, we have a ton of budget transfers and resolutions tonight and I doubt we'll be discussing any of them, but, and thanks to John and what the clerk's office does. You can find the agenda online, you can find it on our website. And if you wanted to listen to the board estimate meeting, you would have heard them all discussed. It's on, it's public and you can attend it, you can listen to it online, you can turn on channel 20. And other than that, you can read all the supporting information. So we've all done that already. So hopefully we'll zip through these now that I've finished. Thank you.
Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois to amend the city code to add an ordinance to prohibit double parking. Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Orange Bank and Trust Company for SmartSafe Program for the Finance Department.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by older woman Ram Cassoon to transfer within the senior center 2021 budget, a total of $4,000, to bring the senior bus up to regulations to pass the New York State Vehicle Inspection.
A resolution sponsored by Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer $1,990, $195,261.85 from the water fund balance to the fund balance of the, for the purchase of 28 Pilgrim Corners Road.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? I will be abstaining. I represent the current owner and the real estate transaction. Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Staying.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the treasurer to transfer $25,000 from the 2021 ARPA funds to cover plumbing costs associated with the reservoir restroom capital project.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with NearMap US Inc. for subscription to an aerial imagery program for the assessor's office.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the mayor to sign an essential assurance agreement with NORCOM for repairs and maintenance for the city's Mitel desk phones for an annual cost of $5,648.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François to authorize the mayor to sign an essential assurance agreement with NORCOM, oh, sorry. Resolution by Alderman Jean-François to approve the annual renewal agreement with PERMA for the third-party administration services and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
A resolution by Alderman Johnson-Frassois, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $9,120 to fund a contract for telephone maintenance and to fund tax expense for properties not included in the 2021 budget.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $17,032 within the Police Department budget of 2021.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $6,500 within the 2021 Fire Department budget.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's okay.
Well, I'm sorry. That was that one. One got stuck together. What do I do?
Just go to the next one.
A resolution by Councilwoman Ram Cassoon, older woman Ram Cassoon, to transfer $17,032 within the Police Department 2021 budget.
A resolution sponsored by Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that was... I'm sorry. That was good, that was good. I think we're back to where we need to be now. Okay, this is, "A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to amend the city code to provide a specific methodology consistently calculate water sewer hookup fees for new construction and a change for use of existing buildings."
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Tri-State Geese Police Contract to Control Geese Population in City Parks for 2022."
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $7,900 within the DPW 2021 budget for unexpected costs."
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
"A resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $18,100 within the DPW 2021 budget to cover fuel costs, fuel costs per city for the remainder of the year due to rising prices."
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A resolution by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $17,500 within the DPW 2021 budget due to issues at the WWTP."
A resolution by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
"A resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $25,000 within the DPW 2021 budget to cover accessory repairs to the carrier blade of truck number 16."
A resolution sponsored by Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A resolution sponsored by older woman Ram Cassoon to authorize the treasurer to transfer $13,000 within the DPW 2021 budget to cover the price increase for two Dodge Rams."
A resolution sponsored by Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to cover, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $58,451.11 within the 2021 city budget to cover expenses."
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve funding for the ONW Building Restoration Project from ARPA funds in the amount of $3 million."
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. "A resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to approve funding for the ONW Building Restoration Project. A resolution committing up to $1 million of City of Middletown funds towards the ONW Building Restoration Project."
A resolution by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
"A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $20,000 within the 2021 DPW budget to construct two new proposed fenced enclosures with gates for the two new garbage and recycling depots downtown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois to award bids for eight surplus vehicles auctioned off through Auctions International.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to amend the city code to make Walnut Lane and Amshire Avenue a three-way stop street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.[1320.72]